Thank you very much. So, good afternoon. We are going to start with committee of the whole. I first wanted to make note that all council members are present this afternoon. And we have three agenda items before us this afternoon. The first is Agenda Bill 23243. This is an update on Grace and Lead programs. So since 2018, the Grace program has operated in Watcom County, offering case management and other supportive services to individuals regularly utilizing our emergency and criminal justice systems. Since 2020, the Lead program initially started by the prosecutor's office has provided services to individuals involved in the criminal justice system. These programs are funded by both Watcom County, the City of Bellingham, and Peace Health, as well as through state and federal grants. In addition to the operational services provided by C Mar, there is a systems work component in coordinating emergency response, hospital, community provider, and criminal justice partners to ensure efficient and effective service delivery. The Watcom County Health Department has provided the hub in collaborating with the various spokes involved in these programs. And so this afternoon, we have a couple of presenters with us. I didn't know if there were any internal staff members who had anything to add before I turn it over to the Watcom County Health Department Director Erica Lattenbach. So seeing done, I will turn it over to you, Director Lattenbach.
Thanks, Council President Stone. Good afternoon, all of you. I'm actually going to ask Dean White, one of my colleagues, to start the conversation and then I will provide a bit more information. So go ahead, Dean.
Okay, well, yes, my name is Dean White and I work with Erica and the Health Department. And as background for Erica's presentation regarding the proposed new Response System Management Division in the Health Department, I'm going to briefly describe the Grace and Lead programs, which will form the core of the new division. And for most of you, this will be a refresher, but perhaps some new information to the newer members of the council. As was mentioned, in 2018, the county began contracting with C Mar Community Health Center to operate the Grace program. But the program actually brought together several pilot initiatives that had been in place through partnerships between Bellingham, that is Emergency Medical and Law Enforcement, and Peace Health, the county, the Opportunity Council, and the Watcom Alliance for Health Advancement. Each of those pilots designed to work with particular community members experiencing frequent use of emergency medical services, frequent contact with law enforcement, or frequent hospital emergency department or inpatient use. To be eligible for Grace, a person must have had multiple contacts across two or more of those systems of care. And we call those persons our familiar faces, who are offered membership and receive intensive case management and care coordination services with the goal of connecting them to health and social services and housing where they can begin to live more stable lives. The program includes an advanced registered nurse practitioner, or ARNP, who does street outreach and meets members' health needs until they're connected with a medical home. The case managers are paired with behavioral health officers or community paramedics, depending on the makeup of their caseload. And that's also where many of their referrals come from. Of course, the expectation is members' frequent contact with emergency services and law enforcement will decline significantly or even disappear as a result of their involvement with the program. In previous presentations, you've seen data to show those outcomes are being achieved for graduates of the Grace program. For example, 95% reduction in jail bookings and an 85% reduction in EMS contacts. A key element of Grace, as was alluded to, in addition to supervising the case managers who partner with behavioral health officers or community paramedics, is to coordinate the system of relationships with both the referring partners, law enforcement EMS ER, and service partners to whom members will be referred and connected for ongoing support and service. In 2019, the county prosecuting attorney began exploring a program with similar goals and services offered, as did Grace, focused on a more specific group of community members, those who face arrest for low-level offenses. The program already underway in other communities, including Seattle, was called Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, or LEAD. Its goals are to divert its clients from the criminal legal system and connect them with needed services to become stable, law-abiding members of the community. LEAD programs historically result in about a 58% reduction in rearrests for those who join. Because the staffing and the services were very similar to the Grace program and the follow-up service systems needed by LEAD clients were the same as Grace members, the prosecuting attorney proposed implementing the program under the leadership of Grace. Accordingly, the county in 2020 entered into a parallel contract with C Mar Community Health Center to also provide the LEAD program under the Grace manager's leadership. And again, as you've seen previously, showing the impact for people who join is beginning to be felt. That's the background of the two programs, and I'll now turn it over to Erica, who will talk about the initiative underway to bring the Grace and Lead programs in-house to the Health Department.
Thanks, Dean. And I want to thank Dean and Gail DeHogue from the Health Department, as well as Vanessa Martin, who works for the prosecutor and was critical to receiving grants and starting the LEAD program, as well as Melora Christensen, who's the manager of the Grace and Lead programs within C Mar. The dream team of the four of them have really brought this whole project to fruition, and I just appreciate the work that they've been doing for the last six months or so. So we recognize the significance of the systems level work that Dean alluded to and the importance of collaborating with partners to implement systems improvement and efficiencies. And recent law changes regarding response have added additional complexity for families, law enforcement, emergency responders, and nonprofits in supporting the complex needs of individuals who are suffering in our community. For this reason, we believe that housing, Grace, and Lead in the Health Department will help bring about some of these system changes. We have served, as Dean mentioned, as the Grace hub and can be more effective by shaping the operations within the Health Department to meet the needs of our various spokes in this work. So late in 2021, we negotiated with C Mar to extend the contracts for Grace and Lead through March of this year. The Health Department will assume operations of those programs on April 1st. And what this looks like is we will have a new division, our Response System Division, with 14 employees, including nine case managers, a manager, two supervisors, a nurse practitioner, and administrative support within the Health Department. We're also examining our existing Health Department programs and determining if it makes sense to include some of those closely related and complementary services in this division as well. These decisions will likely be phase two of implementation after we transition the Grace and Lead programs in April. So the timeline for your information is our county council will vote, hopefully, to approve the supplemental budget tomorrow, which includes the manager for this new division, so we can hire that person soon, and they will be able to have a role in hiring the rest of the team. All of the other positions are included in a supplemental request that should be considered and approved on the February 22nd council meeting, which will ensure a smooth transition on April 1st. And I just want to, before we open it up for questions, I want to just reiterate our appreciation for the City of Bellingham's financial contribution and operational partnership in the success of these programs. It's made a big difference, and as you know, these programs are incredibly successful because of the partnerships of our joint governments, as well as Peace Health, our community partners, and others who have an interest in this work and see the value in it. So, thank you, and happy to take questions about this transition.
Thank you very much to both of you for presenting that background, as well as the update regarding the expected transition, as you noted, to take place April 1st. We will first turn to Councilmember Lillicust.
So Director Lattenbach, this is exciting to, I think, see kind of a recognition of the significance of these programs that together they constitute a division. You call it, I think, a response division. There's also discussion about the alternative response team, which again is envisioned as behavioral health-trained crisis responders. I believe that's also housed, would be housed within Health Department, presumably also within this new response division. Am I reading that correctly? Or Dean?
Erica, do I mean your response?
No, go ahead, please. Please, I muted yourself, so go ahead.
Yeah, so, yes. Councilman Lillicust, I think the intent is that those components of that kind of alternative response team that are the behavioral health or crisis staff that would be part of the anticipated teams would be housed and supervised clinically by the manager of this new division. You know, we've been in discussions with representatives from the city, and many of them are on the call here about how to construct a program that would operationally be based out of the Bellingham Fire Department. I think we've had some lower-level discussions, and we have a meeting scheduled with the Fire Department Leadership next Monday, and perhaps will be being sooner, I'm not sure now. Really, to make sure we've got consensus from Bellingham Fire Leadership about a model that has staff, behavioral health staff clinically supervised by one entity working closely in teams with a program that would be operationally overseen by the Fire Department itself in terms of scheduling and so on. And that's the model we had been discussing in our workgroup meetings the last two meetings this month, not until January. And I think we now have a meeting to just test out whether, you know, what those of us in the workgroup functioning at the sort of middle manager level have come up with something that the leadership think will work.
So, like I said, this sounds like a significant new division, and I fully support that. I think we need to think in terms of pretty big scale and not do this on a shoestring. Does it feel like the county is understanding the resources that it might take for this new division and all these new efforts? And how are they going to pay for it?
Thanks for that question. We're working through the financial element now, and we do recognize that there will be additional costs by bringing this in-house. That said, there are opportunities for additional grants there. Because of some of the recent law changes, there will be additional funding, especially for the LEAD program coming down the pike. And I can share with you that both the Health Department and our county executive are really committed to the success of these programs. So we do have the Behavioral Health Fund as well that is an option for supplementing some of this work, but we are committed to it.
Councilmember Hamel?
I think this is a good move in terms of getting Grace and Lead under the one roof at County Health Department. This makes complete sense to me. Those programs should be government, or the, pardon me, the employees of the programs should be government workers with all of the amenities that government workers get in terms of benefit packages and wages and such. The relationship between the city and the county in terms of on these topics has improved so much in the last seven or eight years that I've been on council. And I just think that we've come a long way. And I think that the, I support the ART being housed within the County Health Department. I think that makes total sense. If you've got the other two kind of big, you know, major food groups of Lead and Grace, and then ART housed altogether, it just makes sense from more of like a streamlined or efficiency perspective. So I'm very supportive of those three programs being housed together. And I can't thank Dean White enough for the man who can never retire. The community keeps calling him back, saying, Dean, we need you to come back and help out with leadership. And Dean, you do such a good job in terms, and you know the subject matter. You're an expert for sure. So I just, I'm supportive, and I would support, you know, further funding of these programs.
Councilmember Martins?
I have such a small little caveat to add, but as a community, it seems like we really want to invest in programs like this. And as a nation, over the past couple of years, I think we found a lot of value in figuring out how to categorize emergency calls better and how to strategize who should respond to those. And almost right on par with Councilmember Hamel's comments, I'm looking at this going $280,000 does not seem like enough when almost the crux of this working is being able to make sure that we're paying the nine case managers enough to want to stay. So I don't need an answer for that right now, but I would just love when we get down to the nitty-gritty of the numbers, making sure that when instituting two programs like this and really trying to bolster them, we don't set ourselves up to fail by having to have a revolving door of having to keep attracting and training and hiring and all of that. I think our community really wants to see these do well and be an integral part of solutions on racial and justice for all in general. So I would just love to make sure that everyone who's planning on this really is thinking about setting the entire program up for success. And that almost directly begins with making sure we're compensating the case managers enough to stay.
Let me just mention that I think the $280,000 number you referenced is the city's contribution to the program through an interlocal agreement, but it by no means constitutes the entire funding for the program. And that doesn't even include LEAD, which comes through a completely separate strain. I think we're going to get close to a million dollars on the LEAD program here with the next round of grants. And, you know, as Erica mentioned, the county contributes a substantial amount to Grace through its Behavioral Health Fund, and then the hospital too puts in some money. So I think, you know, we're very aware that we need to sustain and even enhance the funding, particularly to make those positions continue to be attractive and to retain the staff that are doing the work. They're terrific people.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just more of a comment. Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you for the collaboration of looking at bringing these two entities under one umbrella and then hopefully future ART too. It just makes so much sense to have people who are working sometimes with the same clients to be able to have, you know, be in, hopefully, in one site and be able to have that collaboration and communication. It's just not efficiency of funds, but it's efficiency of the labor, and hopefully that will equate into more successes. So a long time ago, when we talked about the unarmed response, we talked about trying to get all the players together under like one director, one helm, so that the vision could be shared well. So I'm really glad to see this step. I think it's a step in the right direction, and it's definitely going to assist our endeavors to be more successful. So thank you for the leadership on this.
Thank you. If I could just add, you know, we also, the Health Department also manages our contracts with the Crisis Stabilization Center that went in just about a year ago. Again, it's sort of connecting those crisis systems. We also run Mental Health Court, and if we think about some of these complementary services and systems that we do, and with the Waystation coming online in the next, hopefully, year and a half or so, which will have some of the same clients and population as well as our Needle Exchange Program. There's a lot of areas in which we're already sort of touching some of the ancillary programs, and by bringing these two really core and central programs in, I think we can, just to reinforce what you're all saying, I think we have that same vision, that this is a way that we can really help in the efficiency of the programs, but also see enough of them to understand where the gaps are for individuals and how we can make their experience moving through these processes much easier and easier for their families as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Huffman?
I also want to say I really appreciate the move here and that it, these programs will be government overseen and run now and under one umbrella. I think, you know, Grace, originally, part of the intention of Grace was to have all service providers connected and communicating so that we could better serve people, more effectively and efficiently serve people. And so then just continuing to add to that network more and more, I think, just means we're going to better serve people more and more. And so I really appreciate that. It makes a lot of sense. Also, very much want to echo the concerns about retaining staff and making sure that we're treating our staff very well so that they stick around because they're amazing, amazing people. And then also, just, I still, Grace has already shown such amazing results in the short time that it's existed, and I think it's only the beginning. The way I think about it is it's only the beginning of these programs, and that I fully intend, over the years, to be continually, to increasingly support these programs because these results are amazing and it's so needed in the community. So, thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Hamel?
Yeah, just a quick, a couple of clarifying items. So LEAD program came out of the prosecutor's office. That was Vanessa Martin and Eric Ritchie largely, and a team of people. I was on that team, the development team, along with Councilmember Buchanan from the county side. And that's largely, it's funded by DOJ. It's Department of Justice grant, so there's really not, I don't know if there's any local dollars associated with that. I did want to point that out for clarification. And then for Grace, I went to Shoreline Everett, Spokane, Seattle, and looked at all their, looked at their programs, and came back and worked with Opportunity Council, the hospital, the Health Department, what was once Waha, Dean was in the room, Dean White, and we came up with this, you know, this model. And this was a few years ago. And then more recently, last summer, I rode, like I mentioned before, with Captain Joe Frank and then Andrea Day, who's no longer with the Grace program, but she was then. And I sat in on a meeting with the various people that were connected with Grace. There were probably 25 different organizations on that Zoom call because Grace has become the go-to for the problem solving, for people who use our 911 system or parts of it in ways that just don't help them. They're not getting the help that they need, but with Grace, they do. I think that's really important that we distinguish that the Grace folks that I visited in the summer were a variety of people, elderly women who are living alone, but they had a home or a roof over their head. They weren't on the streets. Between the two programs, it's pushing around 200 people, maybe a little bit less. That can be helped. So consider the things that we're seeing now on the street and the problems that we're seeing, and then multiply that by 180 people. And we would see way more of that. So my point is that these programs are, a lot of communities don't have Grace, LEAD, ART, which we will have soon, Community Paramedic, MCOT, all these different programs that help people out in various stages of crisis, we do have those here. I work on various teams and have worked on various teams over the years as a council member, national teams with other cities, and they don't have these programs. It's, I'm not trying to pat ourselves on the back here. What I'm saying is that we have smart people like Erica, like Dean, who see around the corner and see the value of these investments and what they can do and how they can pay off. And I'm just, I'm so pleased that we have such great thinkers at the table. So Director Lattenbach, I wanted to just acknowledge your leadership and thank you so much for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. That means a lot. Thanks.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, I just want to add my comments to the mix here. I totally agree with all of this, and I remember the days when the council was just, well, it was a couple of years ago, but where the council was beginning discussions about a model for all of this. And now look where we are. We are at a point where we have tried something, and it works. And we're now moving it into becoming a community service and institution, more or less. And I totally agree with what Councilman Hamel has said, and and, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hamel and Councilmember Huffman, that once again, we're moving, we are moving ahead with something progressive that's going to help, hopefully, address these problems that we're having. So I wholeheartedly am behind this.
Councilmember Anderson?
Sorry, I know it's a big love fest, but Councilhamel, I just wanted to state, do pat yourself on the back, and the Health Department and our community partners. Because the reality is, as you pointed out, you know, people tend to see, you know, the mental health crisis, the homelessness, the drug addiction on the street, and they think we don't do anything at all. But what they don't realize is that we have been a leader in putting together programs, and those programs have been a great intervention of having, we basically have less issues currently on the street than if we didn't have these programs. And these programs are successful, and the hope is we'll continue to make a dent and change lives for the better. And as you pointed out, there's a lot of communities out there who don't have any of this assisting them. And it was the vision of city council leadership and county council and our partners years ago that started this process. And we've made great strides, and there should be some congratulations because it's not to be boastful, but to really understand the positive impact that these measures have had on people who are struggling in the community as an intervention and prevention method. And we should be proud of the work we've done, and we should be celebrating that in a way that we tell the community that we have done great things, and we'll continue to do that. And there's nothing wrong with once in a while saying, you know, this is pretty amazing what we've done. And now we're even going to make it better. And to thank our community partners because, you know, the Health Department, our law enforcement, our legal system, and I can list, you know, 30 different agencies right now, but collectively, this has been an amazing community. And that is one of the things that makes Watcom County and Bellingham a wonderful place to live. And we should acknowledge that at times. And you've done great work. And so, you know, a lot of us kind of pick a niche, but, you know, we excel at. And a lot of this work has come because of your passion towards it. So if you're not going to give a pat on the back, I will. So thank you very much for leadership in this.
Thank you all very much. I wanted to follow up if there, I presume that there will be, you know, news releases to come and additional information, right, as we near that April 1st date. But in reporting out this evening, there were just a couple of things I just wanted to follow up on because my note-taking wasn't fast enough. So just make sure I got, if you could state again, Director Lattenbach, the dream team of four, those four names again for me.
I would be happy to say their names publicly anytime. Dean White, Gail DeHogue, Melora Christensen, and Vanessa Martin.
Thank you. And I also wanted to make sure that I had the name of the new department correct. And so whether that was a Response System Division or what that title was.
Yes, Response Systems Division.
Okay.
It's liable to change. It's not the best part of this transition. The name could be improved.
I understand. We will leave that open for further development. But then I just wanted to confirm as well, you'd said that there were 14 employees total. And I apologize, but if you could just run down that list again of how that was broken up?
Yep, nine case managers, a manager for the division, two supervisors, one for Grace and one for LEAD. Yep, nine case managers, um, a manager for the division, two supervisors, one for Grace and one for Lead. Uh, a nurse practitioner and um, some administrative support.
Wonderful. Yep. Um, no, those details were appreciated without the written support in the packet. I just want to make sure that I get that. Accurate and report out this evening, but want to thank um, both of you, Dean White, Erica Lautenbach, very much for bringing forward this update. And we look forward to further developments as this transition moves forward towards that April first um, goalpost. So. Thank you very much and we look forward to being continued partners in in this work. So moving forward this afternoon, the next item we have before us is Agenda Bill two, three, two, four, four. So this is Bellingham Police Department Staffing Update. The Bellingham Police Department will provide a staffing update. Recent changes to the staffing model in the department emphasizes increasing response call times. Staff will present on the org, on the reorganization as well as the strategy and timeline toward a fully staffed department. And for this, I'm, well, I see, I see interim chief flow Simon. Um, and so I will first turn it over to Chief Simon.
Thank you, Council President Stone. Thank you for having us. City Council Mayor Fleetwood. Um, as you know, we spoke to you in the latter part of two thousand and twenty one about our staffing challenges and what we intended to do. And so I've asked Deputy Chief Don Almer to come give you a five minute overview of uh, where where we are, where we're headed and um, what the future holds for us. So. Without further further ado, I'll introduce him. He'll be on my camera because his camera is not as good as mine.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Uh, five minutes to go over a quick overview for the police staffing. Currently, our allocation for full time commission employees is a hundred and twenty two. You'll hear me use the number one thirteen because I take out the nine command staff. We have one chief, two deputy chiefs and six lieutenants. So if you hear one thirteen, that's just kind of the the workable number that I use for call response and things like that. So that one thirteen currently right now, we have thirteen openings. Uh, and those are, we are increasing recruiting efforts. We're employing different strategies, things like that to get those spots filled. Uh, the difficulty with that is, as I'm sure you may have heard, every agency in Washington State is after the same applicants. There's been a, I believe the exact number is thirty two percent. There's been a thirty two percent decline statewide with respects to uh, folks attending the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. Last year I got the numbers from the academy and there was less than four hundred fifty officers for the entire state. That went through the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. So to give you a perspective, you know, I I took the test and there were four hundred applicants. So it's uh, it's just not a profession in Washington State, but a lot of people are going to. Um, and so because those agencies are going after the same recruits, you know, we're battling other agencies. Um, and various strategies to get folks to come up here and take our test. Um, Bellingham is a couple of, I I think geographical oddities that that work against us, but we're trying to employ some alternate strategies to to get our recruiting numbers up. So in addition to those thirteen open spots that we're trying to fill, uh, to include those thirteen, we're down thirty four active positions. So that means twenty one people are either in the academy, coming back from the academy, but not uh, able to be on their own yet. Uh, medical, advanced medical, things like that. Um. Through the statistical analysis we did, I'm hoping to get maybe twenty of those folks online as the year progresses. So quarter four will certainly look better than uh, quarter one. But you know, that's always up in the air. We had somebody out uh, awaiting back surgery. The surgery should have been done. I want to say a couple of weeks ago, but it got put on hold. So you know, tho- those things are always in play and we obviously can't control that. Uh, so being down um, thirty four active positions and I I say active, meaning somebody in a uniform actually doing the job. Uh, what we did was we had to make the difficult decision to continue our reallocation. Many of you on the council uh, were present when I was a special operations commander. And when we cut our bike patrol, our anti-crime team and things like that, we continued that this year. So we removed basically everything that wasn't patrol or investigations. And allocated it back to patrol. So technically now the only specialty unit we have is our four person K nine unit. But everything else such as the traffic unit, you know, the motorcycle officers, um, our behavioral health program, our district resource officer in partnership with the school district. Um, anti-crime team still, uh, special investigations unit. Um, all those units uh, have gone uh, on basically temporary hiatus. Uh, so we could get those folks back on patrol to help with our call response time and to adequately staff patrol uh, better than it was. When I say better than it was in two thousand and twenty one, uh, during certain times of the day, our staffing was four officers and a supervisor for the entire city. And then at peak times, it was eight officers and two supervisors for the entire city. Uh, so now, uh, because we've allocated those people back, um, sometimes we get a little reprieve from that. So the numbers are a little better. Uh, but like right now, it's two fifty two in the afternoon and we have ten officers for the whole city. So we have two supervisors and eight patrol officers. So uh, we're hoping as time progresses throughout the year and we get some of those folks back either from injuries. Or like our academy folks, we had four graduates come back last week. They'll start our four month training program. So I'm hoping to see those fine folks in quarter three. And that'll help the numbers go up a little bit. In addition, you know, if we're if we're able to fill those spots and get the folks there, if they're a lateral. Uh, especially in in-state lateral, it's very much quicker because we just have to put them through our internal uh, training process because they already hold a certification. From the state academy. Uh, but if they're an outer state or a brand new person, then we have to send them to our state academy, which. This year is expected to have a seven and a half month backlog. Uh, then they have to go to the academy for five to six months. And then they come back, spend four months on training. So we're looking at a year to year and a half turnaround by the time we hire somebody that they actually get on the street. Uh, the city was gracious enough to allow us to pre-hire, uh, give authorizations. I spoke with the fine folks at not only the mayor's office, but at finance. And um, if folks are going to retire, we're hoping they will give us enough notice to let us know so we can pre-hire uh, that spot and maybe cut into that wait time. Um, and that is going to be kind of the the process moving for the next three or four years. Cause as many of you know, uh, if I use the um. The two caveats of over twenty years of service and going to be fifty three within the next four years. That's generally the retirement age for most officers. We have thirty four officers that are, we're going to retire, retire within the next four years. And that doesn't take into account early retirements, uh, folks who go and take a penalty. And I know the legislators are working right now on a um, retirement. It's not really a bonus package, but an incentive. Uh, so if that happens, we think uh, some people might off opt for early retirement. So right now, things are a bit dicey with respect to staffing. So we've been communicating with the public and our our stakeholders and you find folks to say, hey. Um, it's still the response times are are a little bit longer than we're used to. Uh, our ability to provide extra services or programs are severely limited because again, we have patrol and we have investigations. Right now, and even our investigations is not fully staffed. So right now we're focusing on like class A felonies, class B felonies that affect people. And trying to do things like property crime and other things like that uh, when we are able to. Um, the backlog for those folks is not uncommon. So we're trying to streamline things. We presented a strategic plan to our personnel over the last month. Uh, I've shared that with some of you folks. If you want a copy of that, we can get that to you. Um, but tentatively, we're prepared to ask for two commissioned FTEs a year uh, through two thousand and twenty eight. Um, obviously, if folks want to do more, that's okay. But I also understand that the city of Bellingham is facing the same impending retirement crisis. So I I think it would be difficult for us to take. Something like ten or eight a year. And even if we did, you know, filling those spots, it's not, it's not as easy as folks think. So with that, as our statistical model, if we have two additional FTEs a year through two thousand and twenty eight. Factoring the current attrition rate of retirements that are planned, I would anticipate um, specialty units coming back sometime between two thousand and twenty nine and two thousand and thirty two. So we will be patrols and investigation only until then. Um. And again, uh, a lot of you folks know me. I'm just kind of the numbers guy and we talk about things like that. Uh, we are looking at alternative strategies, but it at at the point is. I just, I don't have the bodies from an operation standpoint. And this isn't like, you know, hey, we need twenty more people. That's not it. It's it. You can give me twenty spots and my ability to fill those things and then deal with all the backlogs and things like that. We're trying to get an instructor down at the academy. Um, the state, if you have an instructor down there, they allow you four per class, no questions asked. So that would cut into that seven and a half month backlog. But you know, we'll be looking at hiring somebody and maybe seeing them two years from now. Uh, at the rate things are going, which which is challenging, but you know, the good news is our agency, uh, you know, we're committed to, we have. Staffing triggers when this happens, then we do this. When we, this happens, then we do that. Um, and and from a numbers perspective, it's a solid plan. It just takes a long, long time, unfortunately. So you know, when I'm talking to the downtown businesses and they're like, we'd like to see bike patrol or talking to other service providers, we want to see that behavioral health program and things like that. Just the the timeline is so. You know, so drastically long, it's it's kind of disappointing and and to some people, it's it's quite shocking, but I'm willing to listen to other math. And I'll sit down with anybody who wants to listen and and see how it's all mapped out. But I've been doing staffing stuff for this agency since two thousand and sixteen and. It's just the uniqueness of not only Washington State, but this area. And and we have an older department and we have an older um, city employee base. So within the next four years, I think you're going to see this with many departments. I think we're just kind of ahead of the curve. Uh, I got friends in different. Uh, different agencies all through Washington State, especially on the western side. They haven't cut programs yet like we have, but they're about to. So I think you're going to see this more commonly. So in order to better serve our community, you know, uh, I feel that the backbone of any law enforcement agency is to provide. Uh, service for nine one one calls and also to have some kind of criminal investigatory follow up. And to me, that translates to patrol and investigations. So everything else is, um, you know. It's great to have and certainly I grew up in this agency and and was part of a lot of those units, but right now we just, we just don't have the ability to provide that without severely impacting our ability to. To go to nine one one calls. So that's a a five minute overview. I can't see everybody on the screen. So if if there's a moderator and they want to. Uh, any questions I'm here to take. And like I said, I'm willing to sit down uh, for more than five minutes and show you any metrics, any math, anything you need. So want to be completely open with you fine folks.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Almer. Um, so as respect to council, council questions, we'll first go to Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Um, it's just absolutely mind numbing to think that a population of almost ninety thousand at our best. We might have one uh, one person per ten thousand on duty. Um, it's actually pretty terrifying. Should we, being a border town. Um, should we have a large incident? I I really do worry about not only public safety, but also officer safety, making sure that we have sufficient. Um, assistance. I do know that we have some um. Kind of agreements with some of our other uh, community partners out there for assistance, but it's not really the same. And it's not so much a quite, well, there's a question and then a comment. So I I know um, a lot of, you know, basically we've had to uh. Collapse some of our uh, special teams and part of that is our community policing model, you know, our our bike officers and our um. Basically, a lot of those uh, special groups having to go back to patrol. Um. Which is really sad because the community policing model was, I think, an excellent model that served our community very well. Um. When it comes to something like traffic, um, there are areas where people are um, highly trained, kind of specialized accident response. That type of thing. Is there any possibility that they could still be doing patrol and response, but kind of split? Um, down to fifty fifty so that the people who are trained, you know, because if we're talking five, six years before we bring back some of those um, departments, I worry about. Um, some of that specialized training and service uh, kind of having to start all over again. So that's one question, like, can we look at? Uh, kind of a a split in um, their work duties that they can still respond, but they're still out there doing traffic. Um, sometimes preventative. I think about what happened in the school zone when somebody was using text messaging and then. You know, a child was killed, you know, so if we get rid of traffic, then sometimes you get rid of some of the um. The preventative needs to prevent a much larger situation. So that's one thing. The other thing that I wanted to comment on is that when we previously had smaller group discussions on this. I was wanting to throw everything, including the kitchen sink to try to do recruitment. Let's get creative. I'm I'm going to make more of a public statement on that now, but let's get creative on. Can we utilize funding to help uh, recruit people in the sense of. Housing, you know, because our housing is so expensive. So if we're going to recruit someone new coming through the academy where perhaps they're not going to be able to afford rent or buy a house. That if we provided a um, almost like a signing bonus, but it's a down payment on a house and then they. They can't sell the house or if they do, they have to pay a percentage of it back, but it's over like a ten year period so that we could secure interest. In a model where we could bring people in and help with housing and retainment. And then also the pending silver tsunami. It sounds like legislation might be doing some things. But how do we perhaps entice those thirty four to wait four or five years down the line before retirement? Um, I think we really seriously have to sit down and discuss how are we going to do that? Because. If in the next five years we lose thirty four people, we don't have the ability at all to respond, well. Sufficiently to the community needs. So I think as a council and as administration, we have to really kind of seriously look at how are we going to be competitive? And that recruitment process. And then how are we going to retain the people that we have that are trained? Um, and entice them not to retire quite yet, um, without necessarily making the person who has fifteen years in. Feel like, wait, what about me? I don't have a perfect answer to that, but um, and I fully realize uh. Deputy Almer, you are doing everything you can with what you have, but we need to hear to. What can we do as a legislative body and as administration to be able to help mitigate some of these impacts and maybe shorten that timeline? Less than two thousand and nine until we're a little bit more um, back to community policing model.
Mayor Fleetwood, did you?
I was just going to try to sum that up as a question. I think the question uh, Mr. Almer was. What sort of thoughts do you have about creative methods to staff up quicker? Are there any? Is that fair, Councilmember Anderson?
With respects to uh, Councilmember Anderson's first thing about uh, split time and things like that, I. In no way, shape or form is this meant to sound uh, anything other than respectful, but it just, the math doesn't work out. Um, uh, for example, the other night, one of our afternoon sergeants, um, one of the supervisors, they were on duty at ten, twenty hours. So when they checked in at ten, twenty in the morning. There were twenty eight calls for service holding and they left at nine PM and there were thirty four calls for service holding. So it just, right, uh, so we're doing the triage in the sense that and from a safety perspective, not only for the community, like who we're going to, because. Sometimes we don't know the situation till we get there, but also from an officer perspective, certainly if it's it's deemed a risk uh, situ- situation, we'll send, you know, two or three officers to that. Well, you can imagine you get a couple of calls like when we were waiting for this, there was a burglar in progress that four officers went to. So I mean, you can see that group of five or that group of ten gets eaten up pretty quick. So that's why we're trying to explain to your community members like. Uh, you know, which is troubling for us because our track record having these programs and everything like that goes back so far. We're now, you know, we're explaining, well. We want to take your bicycle theft report or your vehicle prob report, but it's not uncommon for a couple hour wait. Um, my concern would would be if we further split time from that, that would reduce that uh. That immediate need for some of those specialty things, you know, such as traffic control and school zones and things like that. But then on the other end, on the other end, we're not uh, we're not fully being able to respond adequately to to calls for service that come in. And all of last year and start of this year, it's not uncommon from a statistical point of view. I think maybe three times a week, you know, your work week is five days, three times a. Three times a week, you're either being held over or called in early. And then on your days off, uh, there's like, I think it was like a thirty percent chance you're being called in to work on, work a whole shift on your day off. And that's just not sustainable. And then my, my concern from the number standpoint is if I continue to split that off, it'd get worse. Um, but on the other hand, uh, things like utilizing skills such as, uh, cons- traffic reconstruction. And things like that, we're still developing those, uh, skill sets, maintaining those skill sets, like the traffic unit is, uh, they're part of a call out team. So if we had, like the other night, we had a, a big crash, uh, on the north end of town, two of the traffic folks got called out. On that to work that crash, we still have those specialties available. And as people, uh, indicate that they're going to retire or something like that, we're going to continue sending people to those schools to have that service. Um, you know, worst case scenario, if nobody wants to do that, then we'll have to farm that out. Right? Well, I was a night shift supervisor myself and actually Deputy Chief Crass, we worked the same night shift. We didn't have a C S I, we didn't have a traffic person. It's like, uh, so we'd call state patrol or if nobody's available, we just got to kind of. Go through it ourselves and do the best job we can. So, um, like, like I said, innovative ways to increase the timeline, um. One thing is we're looking at, uh. Maybe some things that other agencies don't do, uh, a community service officer program where it's a civilian. Um, to where, um, we're hiring civilians. Uh, to do reduced work, uh, on things like that. It doesn't necessarily take a badge and a gun belt. To go do things like taking those vehicle pr- pr- prow reports over the phone. Uh, hey, I found a, a, a bicycle that needs picking up or, you know, the post office giving us the. Ubiquitous bin full of turned in wallets, you know, things like that to where instead of having one of our first responders that i- is better utilized. For emergent situations, having those kinds of calls taken off the screen by those folks. Um, so that's something we're looking at and we're, uh, we've talked with H R and things like that about what does that job description look like? I think from a public perceptions, that's good because we're getting, um, civilians involved and more. You could say, hey, this isn't, uh, necessarily a law enforcement only type job to handle. So that, that's one thing, uh, Chief Simon's working on a retention. Plan because I, I truly think retaining some of that, uh, knowledge and expertise. Even if it's just, hey, stave off your retirement for a year would help with those numbers. Um, and then again, like just because their numbers, we don't know. Uh, I, I would think throughout the state, certainly the trend is to retire on time or early. It's not, I'm going to stay an extra five years. And you know, that, that's just something we are kind of looking at to see what state trends are there. And then you hit the nail on the head, being competitive with other jurisdictions, other a- agencies, you know, it is tough because. We are kind of isolated up here. If I, if I work at Bellevue. And no longer want to work at Bellevue, there's a host of agencies down there I can transfer to without selling my home or relocating. Uh, you know, my partner or my spouse or my significant other or uprooting kids from school and things like that. So. We are looking at those kinds of things. Lieutenant Monson and Sergeant Kyle Nelson are really doing a good job. Uh, being able to be present at recruiting fairs and say, hey, let's, let's get some feedback on why Bellingham makes sense. But yeah, it's, it's a tough road, but that's why I think we are talking with everybody here and getting input as to see what we can do.
And thank you, and I respect your answer about traffic, um, and special teams and good to hear that. Some of those very specialized skills are still carrying over, um, so that they're available when we bring the units back.
Councilmember Huffman?
Thank you. Uh, first a very general comment and then a very specific question, um, and. D C Almer, you kind of just touched on a little bit of my comment, which is, you know, in Bellingham, I love this community because I think we're really good at. At thinking outside of the box and problem solving in creative ways. Um, and I think this is a really great opportunity, hands kind of being forced with this opportunity, but a great opportunity to think outside the box. Um, in that, you know, we have nine one ones call in. Somebody's expecting that nine one one call to be answered and responded to. Can we think of different ways to respond to those calls, particularly if they don't need a law enforcement element? Um, and you know, sitting in with, with this dispatch for three hours, I could, I could hear that there were a lot of those calls that really didn't need a law enforcement element. And we're already thinking about the alternative response team. We're thinking about the ambassador program. It's a great start. Um, and just as the general comment, wanting to continue to invite. Thinking outside the box to respond to those calls because. It's part of our job as a city is to provide that response and to provide good customer service to our, our residents, um. So that is important, but a more specific question, uh, for the numbers guy. So with, uh. With fire and medic, they have, they have specific metrics for goals to, to meet, um, response times and that sort of thing. I'm curious. What is, uh, with the, with the police department, what is, what are the goals for response time and, um, how far off are we on those? Uh, what does, what does, what does normal look like and where are we?
With response to those metrics, there's no, uh, national standard or state standard that I'm aware of because every agency is so different from a law enforcement standpoint. I know, uh, the fire department and the folks at EMS, I know they're way more dialed in with. Hey, this kind of call needs this kind of response. So that's why you see like. Fire district buildings or fire department buildings have to be within a certain distance from their, the, the public they serve and things like that. We don't have such a thing other than that if it's a, you know, if it's a public safety. Issue that's a, a crime of violence or certainly a act of loss of life or something like that. Our goal is to have people there certainly within a few minutes. Um, because we have to triage things, we are still able to go to those. Uh, types of calls because at that point it's all hands on deck, let's move. But there is no standard to where it's like, hey, uh, I need to file a, um, a theft report. There's nothing like, okay, that, that needs to be done within ten minutes or anything like that. We are offering things like online reporting. Or, you know, telephone reporting and things like that, but you know, with respects to the metrics of. Back when I was new and I walked the downtown beat or back when I was newer and walked a bicycle, uh, or did the bicycle patrol and things. It's still the same kinds of things. If there's a hot call, we go to that, we might not have enough people to be able to handle that theft report within. X amount of minutes or things like that. You know, we try, uh, we try and do things, but, uh, unfortunately for law enforcement, it seems like. Something big always comes up and that, that kind of goose up those times. Uh, but with respects to your comments, uh, thinking outside the box and things like alternative response, uh, team, the ambassador programs, things like that. You're, you're going to get support from our agency and from our personnel on things like that because. Again, uh, my personal opinion is I don't think there's anybody in this building that disagrees that, uh, not everything that comes into nine one one. Requires a gun and a badge as a response, uh, and so I'm. Again, from a personal standpoint, I hope all that stuff comes to fruition and, and takes that load off our plate because, yeah, we're not the best people to do that. Unfortunately, right now we're one of the only people to do that. So that's, we got to keep going until that goes. Um, and a good thing is that we, you know, we work with those, uh, community stakeholders and, and those service providers that are our partners in the community or be it. The fire, uh, department, EMS, B H O, that kinds of things so we can hand those things off. Um, but I think as you're quickly learning, when you're talking to the, the fine folks of Grace or M Cott and things like that. They, they often don't like going cold into those situations as well because they don't know. What's on that other side, right? So, um, if there's certainly a, a question of scene safety or steam stability. Uh, stabilization, that need, I can anticipate us still being called. Uh, a- and we're okay because if that, if that's our role on that, uh, making the place safe and then service providers do our things and we leave, that's awesome. Um, but just because that doesn't exist yet, we still have that call load. So you know, I, I often hear in some of these talks, well, we'd like to take call out from you, but I don't disagree with you. I, I'm totally supportive of that and we can, we can work on that together and have those communications and, and like I said, we've been doing it for decades and decades. So. We might know what, what might be a good idea and what might not, um, but until that comes up, we still have those calls. Right? People do expect, uh, some kind of, uh, government response, uh, in this city, either from fire, EMS or police. Um, and certainly if it's something where we can educate folks, hey, that's more of a, you know, Waukam County dispute resolution center call. Or if that's more, hey, you know, talk to the grace program or something like that, we certainly want to do that. Um, but for a lot of times they just. They, and I don't know if it's habit, but they call nine one one because they don't know who else to call.
Councilmember Lillquist?
Hard to know where to start, um. This presentation has made it clear that a worrisome situation is now more worrisome. I was originally going to ask about. Um, unwinding some of these staffing changes and returning back to fuller service. And then Deputy Chief, you mentioned. The years like twenty twenty nine and twenty thirty. For when we might get back to quote unquote, normal. I really did not expect to hear that. I was hoping that we would, this storm was going to last a year or two. Um, that's really worrisome and. It really, I think, heightens the importance of the alternative response team and grace. Yes, they can't take every call. And I think calling nine one one is a good reflex. We've taught people. We just need a nine one one system, which doesn't have to always shunt it off to police officers. As you say. Uh, someone with a badge and a gun, when that's not what's called for, maybe his backup, maybe in the wings, um, but. I'm hoping that. So here's a question, one question. Does the county understand the pressures we're facing? Are they facing similar pressures in law enforcement and? Do they have probably the same degrees of urgency that, that I do? On getting those other mechanisms up and including, I think, I like the idea of lower level handles. Um, uh, traffic reports, accident reports handled by non-commissioned officers. Again, you don't need a badge and a gun. But you certainly need a professional trained civil servant. Yeah, so I guess, um, did, how, does, is the county understanding and feeling these same pressures and is the county as motivated as we are? To risk, to get up those alternative response systems to take at least some of the pressure away from law enforcement. Mister White, I see you here.
Well, I was, I was fearful that I might be the only county person on the call now, but. Um, I guess I just want to say that absolutely, uh, yes, uh. The folks in the health department working on these issues do have. At least the same sense of urgency that you've expressed and, uh. You know, we've been frustrated by, you know, trying to sort out organizational. Issues, uh, and I hope we're getting to the point where we've got beyond that and we can really start to. Talk about how do we get something in operation and, uh, you know, there had been some. Uh, sort of, um. Make shift strategies in the meantime that I think have been employed. Um, for example, um. The mobile crisis outreach team, which is a team run by, uh, Compass Health under contract with the North Sound A S O. The Ministry of Services organization. Um, you know, has been talking about placing one of their. Um, designated crisis responders at the, uh, Wattcom Dispatch Center just for the purpose of trying to. Begin to sort out at the point of the call, um. You know, which kinds of calls could be potentially diverted. Um, and then of course, the, the other thing that's in the mix is the new initiative to create a nine eight eight phone system. Um, I think the county and the city have people who are attending to what's going on with that plan. It seems to be under pressure to bring it forward quickly.
Dean, to the public, can you explain the nine eight eight system?
I wish I could. I mean, I, what I know is that there is a, there's national legislation and state legislation to implement, um, uh. A nine eight eight system for handling, but basically behavioral health or mental health emergencies. But it's not clear to me at this point, you know, what happens beyond the point that someone takes a call. Um, to move it on and Dan, maybe you know more about it.
Um, I can just chime in real quick here. Um, I know that the county's doing a course or looking at doing a co-responder model with the sheriff's office. And that's a little bit different than the A R T. So that would be an actual, um, it'd be an officer and a, like a D C R designated crisis responder. Going out to calls that, that made sense for that pair to go out to. As far as nine eight eight, um, I don't, I think that's going to happen next year, um, if it, if it takes off. Um, as far as who responds, um, I guess locally A R T would be the, the responding. Uh, organization, M Cott is not, they're, they're up to two hours response time and part of that is because they, um. They oftentimes try to figure out the background of what, of the person, because oftentimes they'll know who that person is that they're responding to. And so it's not a emergency response. It's not like a police or fire, fire gold standards, five minutes. And D C Almer is saying, you know, they get there in minutes, but that's not, that's not M Cott, so.
Okay, well, I guess. I'm, I'm really, one of the things that. People love hearing when I tell them is that Bellingham is committed to a community policing model. You know, the police department's motto is committed to community and we've done so many things over the years that. Put meat on the bones to the idea of community policing. And these staffing shortages, one by one, have unwound almost all of that. And that, that's moving in the wrong direction. Um, we want service oriented, protection oriented policing and this. Running from call to call minimally gets the job done, but I don't think it builds the kind of. Police force and the kind of community service that we want. And if there's something I can do to help, please let me know.
With respects to the timeline mentioned, obviously, uh, it's a fluid situation, but it's based on the, the numbers that I have now. Um, and those numbers, just tossing out, so the metrics for our call load. So let's say if we get seventy five thousand calls into the center that are law enforcement, just Bellingham police related. And let's say, okay, uh, out of that, let's say we only respond to sixty thousand because a bunch are. Hey, you can refer them to this or do, do whatever. So sixty thousand, okay, um. Obviously, if we are able to get some of those calls off our plate and. For lack of a better term, put them either an alternative response model or somebody better suited to do those calls, be it a. Community service officer, anything like that, um. Well, again, you're not going to get opposition from us because that frees us up to do what I feel is our primary job, right? Criminal. Uh, investigation, because that's, that's the skill and that's the service we provide that no other entity, uh, locally does, but. From a numbers perspective, I'd love to speed up that timeline, uh, but if our staffing is modeled on call load and then. Just if, look, easy math, seventy five thousand calls a year, let's say somebody takes ten, let, let's say an entity is created that takes. Ten percent of that call for us, that's seventy five hundred calls a year. So seventy five hundred calls a year divided by twelve. Right? Months of the year divided by thirty days, you're looking at twenty calls for that thing a day. So this isn't like me and a friend as the alternative responsible, e- even taking ten percent of the load off us. Unless my math is wrong, uh, is twenty calls a day. That's a, that's a pretty sizable chunk. So, uh, we need to, as a community and, and as folks thinking about this stuff, make sure whatever. Uh, response models we have to take that load, uh, and put it in better place, so to speak, um. And I was listening in earlier is, yeah, yeah, adequately staff and fund that group because that's. That's, that's a lot of calls still, right? Um, but certainly the timeline goes up. If you suddenly say, hey, Donnie, you, you, you only have thirty thousand. Law enforcement related calls to, to deal with, well, then it's a different metric. Right? If Chief Simon, uh, comes through and, uh, hey, everyone delays their retirement by two years, then those numbers change. Right? Or, or we think of something as a group to say, hey, you know, this is going to be happening or we get better recruiting numbers, anything like that, you know. I'm tasked with looking at those numbers. Every other week, so certainly if there's changes, the, good and bad. Those are reported out and we can tell, but I just wanted you find folks to kind of know where we're at and it's not. Oh, my gosh, woe is us, or oh, my gosh, this, that, it's just, this, this is the reality we have. And again, having grown up at this department and having been part of those really community oriented, um. Units, you know, bike patrol, foot beat, anti-crime team, uh, neighborhood anti-crime team to where that was. That when you think of Bellingham, that's our bread and butter. We go to those meetings, we find out what's going on, we talk to people, we engage in the community, not just from a, oh, we're the law enforcement, but they like, hey. Let's shoot hoops with kids and, and talk to folks. Let's get out and walk and see, see what the concerns downtown are. And it might just be like, hey, Donnie, how do we get better lighting here? But you're in uniform, you, you're a city representative, who can I talk with? And developing those strategies and those partnerships where we can all talk amongst each other to have better solutions. I think that's been one of our roles. Right? But right now, like you said, uh. It's kind of hit and run law enforcement because just call load, we are stretched and we're just kind of responding and. And, and again, disappointing for us to have to communicate that to folks, but. Uh, you know, we, we hear about the, the request to be transparent and we want to talk and this isn't a doom and gloom or a scary message. I just. Want you folks to know if you hear from constituents or you, you hear from members in the community, man, it took like the cops three hours to get to this thing. I want you to have kind of a, a fundamental understanding why. Um, because you know what? At different parts of the time, like I said, it goes down to one supervisor and four officers and that, that's, you're running pretty thin when you get five cops for an entire city.
Thank you Deputy Chief Almer. Um, I recognize there are still hands up. I just wanted to highlight.
I just wanted to highlight the fact that we have one more agenda item before our committee this afternoon, before we go to executive session. Not a small item either, like this one. And so important discussion, so I don't want to cut it off. I just want to make that time check. Councilmember Hamon.
I'll be quick. Just to provide a little bit of context real quick here. For the ART, the group that did the analysis on 911 call types, just they came up with a 4% was the number. And it's about what DC Almer is saying, about 20 calls per day. And remember that they're going to be pretty involved calls. They're not something where you're going to go and resolve it right away. There might be some aftercare or taking the person to crisis stabilization or whatever, whatever the outcome is. And then somebody brought up before about Grace responding. I think that was Councilmember Liliquist. It's, Grace is not a response program. And it's meant for the longer haul kind of thing. So it's not going to be one that's going to be able to be utilized for that. So just want to bring up those two points.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for the opportunity to be recognized again. I'll try to make it quick. I just wanted to thank Chief Flo, Deputy Chief Don Almer, all of the men and women of our Bellingham Police Department. I know this hasn't been easy and the thought that the work that you do and there's forced held overtime or being called in on days off. That's extremely disruptive to their family life. And so I extend a gratitude to their family members for the time that they're without their loved one for downtime. I have always been really proud of our Bellingham Police Department because of the community policing model. Talking to a lot of people outside of our community and some of the difficulties. The only time they had contact with an officer is if something was going wrong. And we always made great strides to be there when things were going right and connecting to the community as a neighborhood leader. All of my neighborhood meetings, you know, we always had an officer attend and would take information and share information. And that was so extremely valuable. I know on my end, I'm as committed as I ever was that if you come up with creative solutions or ideas, I want to support that because ultimately supporting our department is supporting our community. I want to get back to that proactive community policing standard that I think some people weren't that aware of or some people took for granted. And yes, as people complain or upset about response time, I'll be more than happy to break it down, which I have been for probably the last year, which has been quite illuminating for people to understand the situation that we're under. But I just want to extend gratitude because I know it hasn't been an easy couple of years. And I think, you know, no one's perfect. We always say that, but I've just always felt that Bellingham was getting it right. And I really look forward to doing whatever we can to, to get back to that model again. And the solutions that you've come up with is, I fully understand the best that we can do right now. But just please share my gratitude to the workforce and their service to the community and especially to the family members because I know they're sacrificing just as much as our men and women in blue are. So thank you.
I wanted to thank you, Councilmember Anderson. In wrapping things up and thinking about next steps and just expressing that appreciation to Chief Simon and Deputy Chief Almer for presenting this afternoon. Is some of the things that you highlighted, Deputy Chief Almer, about the, right? The long waits on 911 right now and trying to determine, right? What, how do we focus fire EMS and police towards those 911 calls? And, right, people saying that's a default because they don't know where else to call? That as other things come online, I think there's a big need, right? For the community education, education and learning that we make those other avenues available so that people know who they're supposed to call, so that those calls are directed to the right place, so that your time can be more effective, effectively focused. But also in looking at ways to divert or reorganize things that you highlighted about, right? We're all talking about unarmed response. In addition to what are some civilian duties that could be handled? Maybe by other individuals or other departments or partners? And so one of the things I've been thinking about also, because we receive a number of inquiries from concerned constituents about, right, abandoned vehicles, abandoned encampments, things of that sort. And some of these items will be obviously administrative decisions. Some may be, you know, rethinking policy decisions and, and hopefully all working together, moving forward over what you're projecting could be, you know, 10 years or, or longer as we navigate this time. One of the things I've been thinking about with the encampments or especially abandoned encampments or vehicles when it is trash is depending on the location, right? If that's in parks or if it's on in public right of ways or wherever that may be. As you've recognized, other departments are facing shortages and staffing needs as well. And so obviously looking to the administration to best navigate that. But whether there's assistance through parks or public works, right, to, to help. But looking at it as one city, the city of Bellingham and, right? This is collectively the situation that we collectively as a community are faced with right now. And so how we respond, I think, is going to be a, you know, true telling to our commitment to, to the work and the public health and safety of our community. So I look forward to the continued work. I just want to thank you for the time presenting this afternoon. And just a call to the administration and fellow council members, right, to continue this work. And I imagine there will be future agenda items coming forward as we, as we move forward. But thank you for your time.
I wanted to extend thanks not only for the kind words, but for the times in allowing us to brief you. And I, my personal thoughts are, it is a team, it is a collective effort. It's interesting, Council President Stone, that you brought up those last things. I've been given authorization by Chief Simon to speak about, speak with other city departments about just that. So I'll be scheduling meetings with Public Works and planning. Again, I, my personal thought, I get we're not the perfect fit for every job and we don't want every job. You know, right? If you have a plumbing issue, I doubt you're calling a cable repair person, right? So we want to be the right fit, not only for the community, but also the right tool for, for what's asked and expected for us. And if we collectively as a city can think, hey, there's a better way to do this, that, or the other, we just want to be part of that conversation and, and help. Because certainly we're not opposed to that kind of thing. And I think we bring a lot of perhaps experience and hey, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? To where you don't have to go through such a, a harsh trial and error period through those things. But yeah, I totally agree with you. We, we want to be part of the solution. We want to get back to where we were, providing services for our community and, and for the folks that we are here to be public servants for. But at the same time, I just, you know, you know, my, my candor is well known. I'm just, I'm going to shoot y'all straight and just say, hey, this is, this is where we're at. This is why we're at. And it's not, it's not anything bad. It's just, okay, let's, let's talk and how can we refine this and make this better? So I appreciate the time. And if anybody has any follow-up questions or wants more details on the, the strategic plan that we're going through or that we wanted to talk about, certainly reach out to the chief and she'll hit me up and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the candor and directness is always welcome, as far as I'm concerned. So thank you very much. So moving forward this afternoon, our next item before us is Agenda Bill 23193. This is a work session to consider amendments to Bellingham Municipal Code, Chapter 17.10 and the Washington State Energy Code, Commercial, requiring electrification and efficiency standards for certain multifamily and commercial buildings. On December 13th, 2021, the City Council held a public hearing on proposed changes to Bellingham Municipal Code 17.10, building codes, modifying the recently adopted 2018 State Energy Code to require electrification of space and water heating, incremental improvements in energy efficiency and solar installation or readiness measures in certain multifamily and commercial buildings. This work session will continue the discussion on the proposed changes, including responses to questions and issues raised in public comment and by the City Council. And for this item, I know we have a number of staff members from, I believe, planning and community development. I'm going to first turn, I believe, to Kurt Nebfeld.
Great, good afternoon, Council. Today I'm joined with Building Official Sean Angeli and Climate Energy Manager Seth Pedonia. The City Council conducted a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the city's building and energy codes back in December. And as mentioned, this work session was scheduled to discuss the comments we heard and, and get into some of the details of the proposal. The amendments focus on electrification of space and water heating, energy efficiency requirements and solar readiness. The proposed code changes only apply to certain large commercial and multifamily buildings and they do not apply to single-family homes or low, low-rise multifamily buildings. If you recall, we're bringing these code changes forward based on council direction that we received back in April of 2021. At that time, we presented changes that the city of Seattle and King County were working on and kind of those three categories. And council directed us to move forward on drafting this ordinance. The changes are identified and support the key initiatives in our climate action plan and are part of the 2021-22 implementation plan. The changes are aimed at helping Bellingham reach its community carbon pollution reduction goals with a long-term goal of about 85% reduction by 2050. In Bellingham, 43% of our emissions come from residential and commercial buildings. So these changes will help reduce that impact. Generally, the public comment that we heard can be grouped into three main categories. Adjust jobs transition, cost impacts of the code changes. And then the differences between the proposed code and upcoming changes being evaluated by the State Building Code Council. Additionally, we had many members from the community, including petitions submitted, that noted their support for the proposal and that council should act quickly on this. The staff memo in the packet, as well as the memo from the December meeting, responded to many of the comments that we heard and go into a little bit more detail than we'll provide today. Taken as a whole, implementation of the city's climate action plan will have a net positive effect on employment. As we continue to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels, there, there will be a time of green jobs transition. And staff believes the city can be a partner in that, but generally believes that these training and funding programs need to come from federal and state agencies, as well as the trade schools and other employment organizations. The council will be exploring this topic in a separate work session and will be hearing from local union and trade groups on February 7. Because of that additional work session, we didn't go into a lot of detail in, in, for this presentation. Also, based on work conducted by staff in the city of Seattle and King County, we believe the code changes will have a cost impacts of below 3% for new buildings. Upfront, upfront cost increases can be offset by operational cost reductions for more efficient equipment and building construction. Any increase in housing costs should be considered, but I think we also need to recognize that the market plays a large role in housing affordability today. For example, just looking at the, the volatile costs of lumber over the last couple of years, that may have a greater impact on costs than these changes overall. We also know that technology costs can decrease as they become more common. For example, just installing solar panels five to 10 years ago was more expensive than it is now. So costs can decrease over time for the new technologies and operational costs may be lower in the long run. One of our local low-income housing providers and CD staff have indicated that the changes will likely require the city to provide a higher per unit investment for some projects to help offset the increases for those types of projects. I think we want to be upfront that there will be costs associated with this, just as there are costs that happen every three years with the state building code changes. So the, the community or the, the industry is definitely used to changes in codes happening consistently. And with those code changes, the costs that are associated with them. I guess that, you know, the question to be answered is, are we okay with these costs? Knowing that if we don't act, the cost to our community from climate change may be greater. That's a big question that we need to ask ourselves here. I'd like to turn it over to Sean now to talk a little bit more about the details of the code specifically. And then we'll wrap it up a little bit later on. So with that, Sean.
Thank you, Kurt. Well, how you doing? Thank you, Mayor Fleetwood, council members and President Stone. Basically, I'd like to give you a little breakdown. During the public hearing, concerns were brought up with the notion of waiting till the 2021 Energy Code, which is currently being evaluated by the State Building Code Council, or I might refer to the SBCC. These commenters identified potential issues for installers, designers and property owners that different versions of the energy code, once adopted, may cause confusion. Additionally, because of the technical nature and nature and number of changes being proposed, there was also a request for additional time to review the proposed ordinance. The International Code Series or Model Codes, as you're, as I'll refer to in this, in this discussion, are developed at a national lever, level and then disseminated internationally to adopt in whole or in part. In Washington, the legislators, legislature created the State Building Code Council, which provides independent analysis and objective, objective advice to the model codes and then provides that to the legislator and the governor's office. Within this process, the technical advisory groups review the, the model codes and make recommendations to the State Building Code Council. The council then holds hearings and vote to establish minimum building, mechanical, fire, plumbing and energy code requirements necessary to promote health, safety and welfare of the people of Washington. Local jurisdictions are then mandated to adopt these codes by the state, including the allowance to make local amendments if those changes do not diminish code requirements. The residential state energy code is considered maximum and minimums and therefore cannot be amended locally. However, the commercial energy code considered minimums can be amended. This is what the attached ordinance is proposed, is proposing. Code, code updates take place every three years, as Kurt mentioned, and ensure our built environments incorporate new technologies, improve building science, advancements in materials and methods, always ensuring improvements in the next generation of buildings. This reoccurring cycle of code changes requires the construction industry and staff to continually learn new regulations and installation techniques. The state of Washington is known for being on the forefront of having a very progressive energy code, which historically has always superseded the model codes. Commenters have suggested that in order to reduce confusion between different codes and between local jurisdictions, the city should wait until the State Building Code Council adopts the latest version of the 2021 codes. Currently, the tag committees are working through more than 140 recommendations by way of member consensus voting. They assess economic impact on small businesses, housing affordability, construction costs, lifecycle costs and the cost of code enforcement, which they then report those findings to the Economic Impact Enforcement, Correlation and Construction Committees. Once this work is completed, the 2021 Washington State series of building codes will be mandated by the state for local adoption, which will, which will commence July of 2023. Staff have evaluated the recommendations and SBCC's actions. And while most of the significant proposed changes reflected in the ordinance are included in the working draft, final action could possibly not include all of them. This will occur in late 2022, with the city local adoptions even later in July of 2023. The administration, city council, excuse me, the administration, city council and many community members have stressed the need to be proactive in adopting policies and regulations that help reduce our dependence on fossil fuels, all the while ensuring greater building efficiency and reduce our contribution to climate change. One such hearing commenter noted that time is not on our side and that action is needed while others are worried about the ordinance will have job and cost impacts. Ultimately, the council must decide whether or not those potential impacts are warranted in the pursuit of city policies and goals on climate change. Based on the in-depth review of the proposed changes by city, by the city of Bellingham staff, as well as cities of Seattle, Shoreline and King County staff, we believe that in order to ensure progress towards our adopted climate change goals every year does matter and that potential cost of not acting could be more severe. Kurt, that, that wraps up my explanation and I'd like to pass it back over to Kurt.
Thanks, Sean. As mentioned, staff believe these changes are necessary to implement our climate and comprehensive plans and for the city to be a leader in building efficiency and reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. If the council adopts the changes, we'll join the city of Seattle and Shoreline and also help King County, Olympia, Tacoma and Eugene with their efforts in this work. If the state passes similar changes later this year, all of the jurisdictions in Washington will also be behind us there. If the state passes similar changes later this year, all of the jurisdictions in Washington will also be behind us there. On the national level, we have a number of cities have passed similar legislation, including fifty three cities and counties in California. And recently, New York City has announced a gas ban by two thousand and thirty. The changes allow us to decrease the climate impact that new buildings have, while also reducing the health impacts related to greenhouse gases and combustion of gases within buildings. You know, these these proposed proposed amendments do that. As noted, we want to be upfront that they do have impacts, but we believe that no action could have greater impacts. Seth, I'm not sure if you'd like to add anything to that. Otherwise, we can turn it back to council for discussion and happy to answer any questions.
No comments, no further comments, Kurt. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So we have for consideration this afternoon, as both Kurt and Sean mentioned, we have the proposed ordinance before us for consideration and possible adoption. Councilmember Liliquist.
Thank you. So I mean, to start off, I agree with the fundamental idea that that no action is not acceptable, that we need to move forward on new regulations that move us away from excess consumption of energy and in particular reliance upon fossil fuels for building heating and water heat. Totally get that. And it is very true that this council, myself included, said to staff, sure, yes, follow the Seattle model. And they've done that. So that's not on them. But I guess I didn't understand what I was asking for, because what I thought I was asking for was an ordinance on building electrification. What we got was an ordinance on building electrification. Good. Solar readiness. I like that idea. And numerous energy efficiency code changes, which are probably really good, but I wasn't prepared to deal with them. And that's really where my trouble is coming from. Yeah, if I look back the memo writ written in December, I try to pull that up. It was a nice memo, I think Kurt you wrote it. Talks about the three main areas electrification, which has space heating and water heating requirements. Perfect. That's core. And electrical outlets, if there are gas appliances related conversion. Great. That's easy. And solar readiness. That's that's really good. And then a large section on energy efficiency, which I'm sure is really good. But I'm kind of, that's where it gets complicated and I'm having a hard time. I want to know how much of that is ready to move forward on. If you can tell me that all of that rather complicated language is probably, probably, probably directly in line with what the state building code council is going to recommend and it's going to be adopted statewide, then even though it's really complex, maybe I can go forward with it and that more time is needed. But I'm being asked to consider language like this. Where total area of the through wall mechanical equipment is greater than one percent of the opaque above grade wall area that the use of the R value method is not permitted. Instead, C section six point four oh two, one point point one, point four, point two, which is a continuous insulation equivalence chart. For that equivalence chart, where all metal penetrations are stainless steel, column B is permitted to be used for penetrations greater than point twelve percent but less than point two four percent of opaque surface area and column C is permitted to be used for penetrations greater equal to point two four percent but less than point four eight percent of the opaque surface area. I don't know what to make of that. I mean, Sean, I'm sure you understand it. Good on you. That's what I'm being asked to consider and that's my difficulty. But if you can tell me that that language is going to be in the SBCC's recommendations, then I kind of don't have to worry about it. I'm worried about creating what I've called a zigzag. Let's do electrification. Let's do solar readiness. That's all sounds great. But these energy efficiency things, I didn't ask for them and I don't understand if they're how they're going to work. And more importantly, for my case, I don't understand if they're going to create regulatory zigzag. I'm worried about the zigzag. Can you please address the language that I just read, right, as an example, and whether or not that's a zig or a zag?
Sure, councilmember Liliquist, yes, they're basically talking about a hole in the exterior of your wall.
Thermal bridging, I totally get it. It's more about that language on thermal bridging and how to reduce the 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 heat loss to thermal bridging and how to measure the heat loss through thermal bridging. Is that a zig or a zag or is that a straight line? Is that going to create a headache?
Right. No, I mean, I think it will be incorporated again. These rules haven't, you know, they're proposed as recommended code changes, but they have not been definitively added to the two thousand and twenty one integrated draft. So I mean, I'm assuming they will be in there. Now, that gives us the, you know, the the knowing that we'll be ahead of the state at least a year and a half prior to them completing development of that and implementing it in two thousand and twenty three. Whereas Seattle, who has the resources to put into the study and 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 building science analysis to have already have done that. So a lot of those code code proposals have been submitted and are going to be voted on or in the processes as explained in the tag committee. But on the on the electrification, I I could have, I I was under the interpretation, we were going for the full, the full boat of Seattle's energy code. And Kurt, you might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but efficiency was part of it, you know, and that kind of wraps in electrification. You truly can't have one without the other.
Yeah, well, first of all, I think now you'll you'll appreciate what our folks in the permitting division do. Trying to have the knowledge and background to understand exactly what these codes do. As we've mentioned before, these codes are very technical in nature. And because of that, you have experts that are evaluating them. Obviously, this is kind of a policy discussion that council needs to 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 weigh in on. Because the details, I mean, Sean and others, they go through training and years and years of training in order to to do this and become specialists in this. So one of the things that 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 we believe will happen with this and we working with our counterparts down in Seattle is that we are getting out ahead of what the state is doing. And this helps by having certain agencies out in front of the of the the rest of the state. It helps bring everyone else along. So all in all, that that's a good solution. That's something that helps us as a state reach our goals together in a in a coordinated fashion. You know, the the discussion of zigzag, I think ultimately what we're making this choice is now that if if council does vote for these 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 changes, we will always be one step ahead of the state. Unless the council says, whoa, hold back, we don't want to be one step ahead anymore. So do we want to be leaders in this area or do we just want to follow along of already progressive state energy code? That's really the decision that we need to make. Ultimately, every three years, these building codes change. So the the industry is used to continual change. That's what happens. There's new technologies that are introduced every three years that that ways of doing construction change over those three years. So change is not not unknown to these industry professionals and our staff. We have to continually learn and become proficient in these new codes every three years. So I think what we're we're proposing here is something that is definitely ahead of the state. It's something that has been thoroughly evaluated from a very technical perspective with the folks down in Seattle. They have a a large division of people that are dedicated specifically to this section of the code. So we have some, we have some people as well internally, but it's a smaller number. So we've had a lot of discussions with folks down in Seattle about the impacts that this causes and what it means. They're learning too, just as we do with every code cycle every three years. We have to learn how to implement a new code and and do we need to make changes or modifications to that? And that that's kind of why that that state has that cycle of amending these codes. So ultimately, you know, I think the zigzagging from our perspective is that once we take that step ahead of the state, we will most likely always be taking that next step and won't be zigzagging back and forth.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Nabafeld, for that perspective. I I kind of share councilmember Liliquist's concern. I can completely, I mean, in my head, I had the electrification, so eliminating fossil fuels for heating and water heating and solar ready. That's great. When we get into all of these nuances, and I won't read you another paragraph, but very similar to what councilmember Liliquist read, but and even understanding some of it, definitely not all. But the concern is, is that, you know, we can lead ahead of the state, but what happens if the state doesn't follow? And then in Bellingham, we have a set of rules. That's not the same rules for Ferndale or Linden or Mount Vernon, and yet those construction companies are the ones doing the work in Bellingham. And it's the slight little nuances that can drive people crazy and create issues through permitting and inspection. Think goodness, Washington State is very progressive and I feel in a lot of ways leading the nation to try to deal with climate change and working on this. So I I have to have a little faith that the state is going to take some giant speed, you know, steps ahead. So I don't know if we necessarily have to greatly deviate from the direction that they're going. Now, if I, if we were Idaho, or maybe I shouldn't say another state, if we were another state that perhaps didn't have the same progressive desire to lead in climate change, then maybe I'd be more comfortable just saying the heck with that. Let's just jump in and, you know, swim on our own. I don't know how to reconcile that, because if we were talking the state was going to be three, four years down the line before something came forward, then it might be worth, you know, just saying, yes, let's go for this, but it's not that far. I don't want to delay the elimination of, you know, basically the prohibiting the natural gas or fossil fuels for heating and water. I think we can move forward with that and also the the solar ready. And then have the state make their changes. And then if there is something really dramatic that we feel like we need to charge ahead and be very different from the state, then that comes through with another update. But really, my concerns are those slight minute differences throughout the entire plan that is really hard for a developer to track. Not that we won't be the same, but we'll just be slightly different enough times to create a headache for development. And we need those multifamily developments that are ready to go. So that's what I'm struggling with. If if you could tell me, yes, the state will follow suit. There's not going to be a lot of potential for those slight nuances throughout this entire plan that's different than the state. Great, you know, I I could be stronger on board, but without that, you know, real complete reassurance that we're not going to see it peppered throughout the plan that creates those issues. I I have some hesitancy on some of the additional work here.
I think, you know, just to to respond to that quickly, I think ultimately I can't guarantee that the state will act that. You know, as Sean mentioned, they're looking at about one hundred and forty three different code changes. And the vast majority of the things that we're proposing are included in that. There's a process that they have to go through and and vote to to put that in. So maybe seventy of them go forward and not one hundred and forty three. So there is that possibility. I think what we do know is that there is leadership at the state level already. And that there is legislation that has already been passed that's going to require the state building code council to continue to make incremental changes in our energy codes. So I I think that we've already have those, the the two thousand and thirty perspective already out there. So that requirement is already out there. So either we make some progressive changes along the way or you wait until two thousand and twenty nine and you have, you know, a substantial change in what needs to happen. So ultimately, the state has provided the guidance that we do need to do this. These buildings do need to be electrified. How quickly we get there is the question that we're really debating right now. And whether or not, you know, we just, we just follow along with with the state and some of these efficiency components or not. Ultimately, you know, I hate to, I hate to put that back on you, but but we have policies and we have comprehensive goals that support that decision that you need, that you can make. So if you want to move this forward, the all three components of it, your policies, your goals all support that. So it it really kind of comes down to, you know, how quickly the council wants to implement these rules and regulations in order to meet our goals and policies and our adopted plans.
Councilmember Hamel.
Thank you. So I'm concerned a little bit about implementation on this in terms of the the people that would, the builders, basically, that would actually be doing this, who have said that this may, this ordinance may slow things down to some degree for some of the reasons that councilmember Anderson brought up. And so I, you know, I just want to go on the record saying that I do support the banning of fossil fuels for heating equipment for space and for banning fossil fuels for heating and cool, yeah, and water as well as as the, as I do support the solar readiness. It's just that the complexity of the eight hundred plus changes within this document just are, they're so technical in nature. And I and I'm, it's not clear to me if I'm voting the right way on this. If industry is saying, you know, hey, this might slow us down a little bit because it's going to take us a while to get through to figure out what's what. Then are we actually meeting our goals of rapid implementation? So that that's one of my concerns. And then a specific concern is the HVAC TSPR, which is the total system performance ratio. And to me, this, it, please correct me if I'm wrong here, am I reading this correctly that it would allow on fossil fuels to be to be used in buildings? Because what this does, this HVAC TSPR measures fossil fuel efficiencies. Is, am I getting that? Am I reading that wrong?
Yes, councilmember Hamel, let me just describe what the TSPR is, which you said it right. It's the total system performance ratio. Basically, went into and went to in effect, December, or sorry, went in effect, two thousand and twenty, which was out of the two thousand and eighteen Washington State Energy Code. It's one of two methods of compliance. It was created to account for the full system efficiency and level the playing fields with respect height and low performing HVAC equipment. It evaluates the system holistically and measures the annual system load compared to the carbon emission from the system. This computation tool allows architects and engineers and designers to evaluate the HVAC system as it relates to the whole building performance design. That basically results in a more efficient HVAC system, avoids complex energy modeling and reduces operating costs once the building is finished and occupied. That's, that's, you know, again, it's not the prescriptive math, the prescriptive method, it's it's another means to go about code compliance. I don't, hopefully that answered your question.
I think one of the, one of the things that that you alluded to, councilmember Hamel and Anderson, as well as is, you know, the the training and the industry that needs to ramp up, so to speak, to learn these things. Staff has to do that as well. That's one of the reasons that the city of Seattle and King County have been providing trainings. Some of our staff have been going to these trainings, participating in these trainings so that we can learn that. And that's generally what happens with every code cycle. So when you get a new code that comes in, our staff go down and attend certain conferences and in trainings to learn how to implement these things. So it's, again, this is, this is not something new. It won't be something new. They'll be learning new technologies, but all impact of having to learn something every three years is something that the industry is well aware of. And and these changes are going to continue as as we progress.
Are there councilmembers who haven't spoken yet who'd like to speak before we cycle back through? I guess I I appreciate what some councilmembers have mentioned with respect to the right technicalities of the code. That's why I'm not an engineer and I'm not working for planning or public works and in navigating those those code sections, but to me, it does come down some point to political will in that we have given direction to, right, city staff and others through policy to get to this point and to take those steps and time is of the essence and whenever there are changes, as have been noted by Kurt and Sean and others, that this is sort of the nature of the industry, that there are changes. But the training and shift that's needed to adapt isn't But the training and shift that's needed to adapt isn't going to happen until it's in place and it's required, right? There's not this preemptive preparation. And my concern is that waiting on the state is knowing when, right? When and if that will happen and what that will, will look like when the time, I have faith in the staff that the time and due diligence, right, has been done. The request was to work with Seattle and, you know, other jurisdictions where this has been done and to learn from that so that we're not the first, but these are the decisions that have to be made to continue on this path. And I am feeling that sense of urgency that, that the time matters and waiting a year is something that personally I'm not, I'm not willing to do. Councilmember Anders.
Thank you. Um, and I too feel a sense of urgency and I'm, I'm not willing to wait a year for, to move forward on this entire package. But I am willing to wait for part of it to come forward, um, in regards to some of the efficiency measures due solely to the concern that if even if 70% is there, the other 50% could be a dramatic headache for development. Um, so to hopefully pressure the point of creating a vote, I am going to make a motion, um, requesting staff to, uh, consolidate this to, and basically just, um, bring it forward. The, um, C four zero three point one point four, which is the ban of fossil fuels used in HVAC heating equipment with some exceptions and then C four zero four point two point three through C four zero four point two point three point four, which bans the fossil fuel use and water heating with some exceptions. And I don't have the section, but, uh, the section on solar ready. So basically I would like to see the elimination of, um, heating with fossil fuels and the elimination of heating, uh, of water heat through fossil fuels. And the addition of the sections of solar ready and have that be the first ordinance for the electrification of our, um, multi-story, multi-family and commercial. And then we'll wait for the state to finalize the efficiency section.
I could.
There's been a motion been made by councilmember Anderson and a second by councilmember Lilliquist. I'll open that up for discussion. Councilmember Hamel, your hand was up first.
Yeah, I'm, I support the motion, but, um, so one other thing, it feels like slightly out of order is the, um, the conversation that, um, councilmember Anderson is trying to get moving. I believe councilmember Martins is, is involved with that too with labor and getting that part, getting more information. I feel like we're, we're slightly carted before the horse, so to speak, on that part of it. And so that's just another reason for me, I'm, I'm not willing to wait a year on, you know, on, on this item at all. I think that we can move forward with the big animating components, the ones that, um, Anderson just outlined, the readiness and then the two items that she just read up, read the code for. Um, I think that's, that's moving the needle. Um, but I, I just feel like I need more information on the efficiencies. I'm not saying to not do it. I mean, we just, before we're talking about accelerating our, our goals and the, and the need for that. That's, I'm a hundred percent, uh, in on that. That's one of the reasons why I'm on the climate action committee is because I believe, you know, fiercely that we need to do this, we need to move forward, but at the same time, there's, it's, it comes down to brass tacks and the how to some extent. And I feel like as policymakers, we're more of a what and the why people, we, we say to staff, this is what we want. Here's why we want it. The how part of it is way more technical and with, with hundreds of changes. I, I just feel like I'm not prepared to, to vote on that part of it. I do support the, the other two thirds of it though. So I just want to, just wanted to explain my thinking on that.
Councilmember Lilliquist.
I have two amendments I'd like to propose. One of them I may not need to propose. In the memo from December, there was also as part of the electrification proposals, an indication that electric outlets would be needed to, uh, built in if instead there still was some non-prohibited gas appliances like cookstoves. Is that language included in the sections that council member Anderson moved? If not, I would move to amend to add those electrification components.
You're asking if, I'm sorry, councilmember Lilliquist, you're asking if, if it's banned to have gas appliances in kitchens, residential kitchens?
So in the memo from, I'm not asking you on, yeah, in the memo in December, it outlined the three component, three bullet points for electrification. The space heating requirements, the water heating requirements, and the third bullet point that has to do with electrical outlets. In this, in the motion that council member Anderson made, is the language on the kind of like electrical readiness requirements, is that in the sections that she already has moved forward? And if so, I don't need to add them.
Yeah, I don't know if they are in those sections. I'd have to look those sections up. But I think to me, that's part of the electrification module is, is.
Let me just move that those kind of electrical readiness components of electrification also be moved, moved ahead and added to councilmember Anderson's motion, main motion. That's an amendment. So I would need a second.
Second.
So the amendment from councilmember Lilliquist was seconded by councilmember Hamel. So the discussion that needs to be related to the amendment, prior to going back to determine whether or not it's included as part of the original motion, which I'll go back and ask councilmember Anderson to highlight, but I just want to say, we're talking about new construction, right? And so one of the things that I think about is that those energy efficiency pieces that we're saying are very technical. I understand, but it doesn't seem prudent to move forward with one without the other. If you're talking about new construction and wanting, once that comes to fruition for it to not only be, you know, not utilizing natural gas and to be electrified, but that those efficiency pieces are up to code as well, um, to ensure, again, that we're minimizing use, um, as we're moving forward. But councilmember Anderson, will you restate the motion with respect to the specific code sections that are included in your motion?
Yes, and I was going to say, um, perhaps I shouldn't have cited the specific sections, just in case there is additional components. The, and I will cite those again for record, but the overall concern, I think the second part of, um, or the expansion of my motion was that to move forward on the, um, basically the electrification of heating and water heating. They're basically thereby banning the use of fossil fuels in, basically heating and water. Um, but the sections, and, and I, again, if I missed a section that's in there somewhere, that would be my one concern being very specific, but if the sections was, um, C four zero three point one point four. And then C four zero four point two point three through C four zero four point two point three point four. The first one I mentioned was regarding the HVAC heating equipment. And the other one, uh, the second one I mentioned was the, uh, bans fossil fuels in hot water heating. And then they both, um, under those sections listed some exceptions, which would still stand.
Councilmember Lilliquist, will you highlight the code section that you're referring to?
I don't know if I will be able to, um, because I'm not sure where it falls in the 200 pages of code. Again, I'm going off of the memo, uh, written by Mr. Navafeld on December 13th, provided to the city council in which the code changes are summarized in three content areas. Those content areas are electrification, efficiency and solar readiness. And I believe councilmember Anderson moved forward at least two aspects electrification and the solar readiness. And I just wanted to make sure that all aspects of electrification were included. In Mr. Navafeld's memo, he doesn't cite the actual code section, so I can't do that without really taking a lot of time.
Might I suggest to the council as a whole, because of the technicality of this code, I, I think it'd be prudent to come back with an electrical, uh, you know, just to, to incorporate, uh, an ordinance that just captures the electrical and the solar readiness and then let you guys review that because it, it, for, for council member Anderson, just to cite specific code sections, she might not be looking at, at the entirety of the implications of those sections. I mean, one of the things about space heating with electrified space heating is the envelope. Now, you know, you're using electricity to, to condition a building that is, is not moving forward with the efficiency aspect. So the envelope is, is really not providing a, a better container for that electrified heat or, or cooling. So there's, I, I, I think I feel that the council is looking for the electrification portion of it and the solar readiness. So I think maybe capturing those and coming back, you know, as a presentation and explaining what better that looks like.
And, and if councilmember Stone, if I could take the liberty for a moment, that was the beginning of my motion was asking staff to bring back um, the ordinance that just includes the electrification component and solar ready and not the, um, efficiency standards. It wasn't so much that we're voting to pass this today. I wanted to consolidate it down, um, thus eliminating the potential for that, um, 70% what the state has and then, you know, maybe 50, um, aspects that the state doesn't, which creates the issue that councilmember Lilliquist was also concerned about with the zigzag that we have slight nuances between, um, state codes and our city.
Councilmember Lilliquist, will you confirm? Because I thought what I heard you say was that the three pieces, electrification, efficiency and solar readiness. It was the efficiency piece that was missing that we wanted to ensure was added. Can, you're muted.
No, I, I, I want, hmm. Of those three components, I want to move the first and a third forward. I believe councilmember Anderson's mostly did move forward the first third components and left behind all the efficiency changes. I wanted to make sure that indeed her motion included all the aspects of electrification and all the aspects of solar. And I believe both of us were hoping to, for the moment, leave behind the efficiency. Me personally, I'd like to make a motion later on that we continue and refer to committee a discussion of the efficiency things. I'm not ruling them out. I'm just not prepared to vote on them. And they're probably really good. Please, you know, Mr. Navafeld, Mr. Angeli, uh, I understand they're probably really good. I just don't feel ready to judge them, but I feel very strong about the other components and I do feel an urgency to move them ahead on a different track.
So councilmember Lilliquist, hearing councilmember Anderson's motion restated, is the amendment necessary or not?
No, as long as I think all of us understand and agree that that's the motion as president, you could state it. And if there's no objections, that is the motion.
And so then the amendment would be withdrawn?
It would be unnecessary if we, if that really was already included, yes.
Okay. Mr. Gardner? You're muted, sir.
Sorry, coming out of, coming out of hiding here to, uh, make a quick point. We, we did have quite a bit of discussion about costs and one of the biggest cost drivers that the builders were concerned about is having to use heat pump for space heating throughout complicated multifamily buildings. One of the things that we heard very clearly from the Seattle experts were that some of the envelope changes that related to efficiency reduced the heating loads such that you could get by with less expensive HVAC or you could even use resistance, which is considered a relatively inefficient technology, but which, with very small rooms, like a small bedroom and with, um, very good envelopes, you can get by and use it. It's cheaper. Um, so, so there, there's a possibility, and I think this would be a, a staff investigation would need to speak to the Seattle people and, and find out, maybe there'd be some cost increases from this such, such that you would have to use more heat pump technology. So it's just a, a, a concept I wanted to get out there that, that, that these were designed sort of in conjunction with improving the quality of the building envelope. And so, um, we would want to make sure that there's not any unintended consequences coming out of that.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gardner. Um, Mr. Vedanyan?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just a couple, uh, thoughts here in our, our conversations with Seattle and, and learning about their rationale. Uh, I think this is echoing a little bit of what, uh, Mark Gardner is saying, is that these, uh, these, uh, codes were designed as a package. And one of the, one of the thoughts that we heard, um, several times from Seattle is that the, uh, they were concerned with um, the ability, uh, of, of the grid to handle all the electrification that would be happening in Seattle and other areas. And so they built in those efficiency requirements in order to, uh, reduce the load on the grid for electrification. You can certainly, uh, do the electrification requirements, uh, only, but, um, the, the, sorry, the efficiency requirements were intended to reduce the load on the grid. They looked at the state energy strategy. They looked at how much electrical power would be needed over the next decades. And they said, uh, designing and efficiency will help, the state strategy will help, um, other entities to produce the electrical power that we need. So that was part of the intent, um, for having the efficiency pieces um, in addition to what, um, Mark Gardner said. And then just a, a quick note on, on their, their strategy. I mean, we've been talking about the, the interactions between the state and localities here and whether we should wait for the state to pass something. Um, and what we also heard over and over from Seattle and others is that the state does look to, uh, communities like ourselves as, as leaders. Um, they look to us as, uh, um, potential, uh, points of development for this code. So when we move forward, it makes it easier for them to say, all right, this is being developed and being adopted in multiple areas. We might, um, be more emboldened to move the state policy forward. So there's, there's an interaction between what we do and what the state does. It's not just a one-way, um, sort of, of interaction there. So just a couple of thoughts on, on this for your, your consideration and totally appreciate this. This is a very complex thing, um, to, uh, to understand.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanyan. Um, so councilor Anderson, I see your hand. I just want to restate, so the motion before the council at this time is from councilmember Anderson. It was seconded by councilmember Lilliquist, which is requesting that staff bring back an ordinance that focuses on electrification and solar readiness without the efficiency, um, pieces. Any further discussion? Um, councilmember Anderson, your hand was up and down, but back up. So I'll call you first.
I just wanted to ask staff, um, and I, and I do definitely support the, um, the need for efficiency and, um, but I'm just wondering if a developer is building a large building and it would be more cost effective to, um, improve the envelope in order to reduce the cost of perhaps the installation of heat pumps. Is there anything barring them from increasing the efficiency on their own without it being part of the code?
No, not at all. A councilmember Anderson, they can go above and beyond, right? The code is, is, is minimum. In the commercial energy code, it's, you know, it's up to the local jurisdiction to, to adopt or amend the code as they see fit. Um, one thing I can add is the R2, so multi-family R2, there is the exception in there for dwelling and sleep, sleeping units. When they go with the electric resistant, you know, resistant heat in lieu of fossil fuels, there, you're capped, you know, at a threshold of watts for the type of unit. But I guess if we're looking to, but generally create on a location, um, policy, you know, I guess we could leave those elements out. But again, I think, uh, as, uh, as Seth stated, you know, it was developed as, as a building as a whole. And so those elements work together, you know, the efficiency port. And so those elements work together, you know, the efficiency portion really kind of complements the use of electric, the use or the banning of electric resistance heat and encouraging the heat pumps. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Councilmember Liliquist?
Yeah, a few last little kind of debating points in support of the motion. This is still moving ahead, and I do want to move ahead, and we need to move ahead. Is it a matter of lack of political will? No, I have a political will to move towards electrification and solar readiness. I just, it's not a matter of political will that I feel uncomfortable with passing efficiency regulations I didn't understand yet. One concern has to do with the so-called new demand on the grid. If we go to electrification, this is new construction, it will come on slowly and incrementally. This is not going to transform all buildings electric overnight. So a lot of these grid-based arguments, I don't take, I don't buy them. Because this will still be a transformation over several years, if not longer. So I think we can adapt, because we can see it coming. The concern that buildings won't be insulated enough to rely on heat pumps, there's nothing in the code that prevents you from insulating your building and designing it more efficiently, right? These efficiency regulations, even if we don't adopt them, you can always go above and beyond them, as Mr. Angelie said. So I do not think that's a problem to design energy efficiency buildings. Yeah, they were designed to work together, and they should work together, and nothing we pass will stop them from working together. So that's not a problem we're creating. People can still build efficient buildings without having to follow that particular code that we adopt. And then finally, you know, that we should lead by example. We will be, the headline will still be Bellingham bans fossil fuels in new buildings. That will still be the headline, if indeed we go ahead with a revised ordinance and pass it soon.
Any further comments from council before we call the vote? I appreciate the comments made, I still believe that it's not practical to move forward with the electrification without the efficiency. As you've mentioned, builders certainly can go above and beyond. The concern for me is that builders won't to save money. And then we're gonna have those unintended consequences, where we will have new construction that's electrified, but completely inefficient, and a drain on the grid. And people who are opposed to electrification to begin with are gonna say, see, I told you, this doesn't work. So I don't want to set ourselves up for failure by doing half the job, when, again, it's a package. So I will be voting no, but if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no?
No.
No.
No. Any abstentions? Okay, seeing none, the motion fails, three, four, and zero abstentions. In light of time, we saw 45 minutes of executive session. I don't know if staff at this time, if there's a motion to, well, I guess, in, Councilmember Williams?
Can this be tabled for a week and a half? Or give us more time to digest all of this?
We could talk about it tonight.
I mean, it can certainly come back tonight. I'm, I mean.
What I'm asking is, do we have to vote on this today? Or can this be delayed by a couple of weeks? So that we can get a better grasp of the whole picture.
So at this point, Mayor Fleetwood?
I was just gonna ask Kurt or Sean, can you disclose from your perspective what the implication is of holding this over, if that's the intention of council?
Well, you know, I think ultimately, whether we pass this now or a modified version later, I think ultimately staff believes that what's being presented is the right move forward in order to accomplish the goals and policies that the council and the community have. They're hard decisions, we totally acknowledge that. But I think whether or not, if you feel like you want to delay that vote, staff can come back and you can consider more. The one thing that I caution is that, what I've heard a lot today, is that there's so much here, it's so technical that I'm, you know, I'm not prepared to move forward. And I don't, realistically, I don't think the council will ever be fully able to acknowledge and understand that the technical difficulties and changes there. So I'm not sure what more staff can do to help provide you to get comfortable with those decisions that are, you know, a very long, very technical ordinance. We can try to do the best that we can to reiterate the issues between kind of bifurcating this and only doing certain things. I think some of the issues that have been raised there are very valuable. Without requiring these efficiency changes, we may not be actually doing where we were hoping to go. So either way, we're happy to support council, in whichever way they want to go with this. We can bring more experts in from Seattle to maybe try to help, if that's what you'd like. Ultimately, today, staff feels comfortable moving this forward. We acknowledge there will be issues and concerns, but we believe that the adopted policies and goals that have already been done by the council supports this action. Looks like Director Johnson may also have some comments on this.
Director Johnson, did you?
Just briefly, in terms of staff efforts related to climate, and that's not a, we just have a lot to do when it comes to climate. And while certainly we welcome further discussion and tabling it to a future meeting, or moving forward today, or separating into multiple issues, that is totally the council's prerogative. As we look at the volume of things to do in terms of climate initiatives on the work plan for 2022 and future years, as we take more time to do each individual thing, that takes away from our ability to move on to the next item. So that, not needing to say the obvious, I just say the obvious. But as this team that you see here, Kurt and Sean and Seth and Mark and others work through these types of ordinances and present to you what our recommendation is as staff, this is our recommendation based on the technical work that Sean and Kurt and their teams have moved forward with. So just be aware that there are staff implications to working on other issues, as these things, these other issues, take additional time to come to conclusion.
Thank you, Director Johnson. So in light of the ordinance that was presented in the discussion today, I'm prepared to make a motion to move the ordinance forward as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made by the chair and a second by Councilmember Williams. Open up for discussion, Councilmember Williams? Did you have your hand?
I just took my hand down.
Okay. Seeing no hands raised, I'll call the Councilmember Huffman.
I haven't even said anything yet, I've been listening a lot, this has been a tough discussion. I think I've been, my own feelings about it has gone back and forth a lot with every new comment about this. I think, but I think compelling factors for me are that it seems like the efficiency element to this, these changes is really important, and I don't, I don't like the idea of doing some of it without the rest. Because I don't know how far that's going to lag behind, one's going to lag behind the other. And and also, we, we, we've talked a lot about the urgency of acting on climate change lately. And I think this is, this is a great example of that, is getting bogged down by the details of some of this, that we aren't, I think what Kurt mentioned, I don't know if we'll ever understand to the point that we're comfortable with it. Maybe we will, but is it worth that time spent to do that when we could be moving on to other things? So, like I said, I've been really on the fence this whole discussion, but I think I would prefer to see the whole package, because I do have faith in the staff, that they have been very thorough in this. I would prefer to move the whole package forward than piece by piece.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I can't imagine anybody would vote no based on the motion, because even with my motion, the main important part is the electrification and elimination of fossil fuels. I would just ask that when the state comes forward with their updates, that staff keep an eye towards what are the differences? And then take a look at if there, if there are small changes that are not so critical in our plan for efficiency or electrification, and it would make life easier for the development side, that perhaps we tweak the plan to align a little bit better with any of the state changes and use our best judgment on that, because you are the ones that will be implementing the permits and plans and dealing with the developers and any headaches that might ensue, should there just be minute changes here or there and difficult for them to track from one municipality to another. That was my primary concern, is on the development side, ensuring that they can go forward with certain reasonableness to build in our community and not have a lot of, like Councilmember Liliquist stated, zigzags. So I'll support it, because it is important to climate change. But again, my favor or request would be is to keep track of those differences between the state and us. And if there are slight modifications that make it easier for development, to consider bringing that forward to us at a future date.
Councilmember Williams?
I'm just speaking in favor of the motion, obviously, but I come from a world where sometimes leadership defines the issues and defines the regulations. And from what I heard Kurt say, and I'm, I'm sort of putting words in his mouth, but if enough cities take the initiative to pass something like this, the people at the state level are gonna say, God, they just made our job a lot easier. And, and it's the leadership that will define what the state does. And if they do pass something that is a little bit different, it probably would not be the big major things that are in the, in, in, in the things that have been passed. It would be things of somewhat of a diminished capacity that might be different. So it seems to me the best thing for us to do is to vote this through and allow our leadership to impact people at a higher level, in concert with other cities. There, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. So the motion was made by the chair and seconded by Councilmember Williams, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or abstentions? Seeing none, that passes seven zero. Anything further needed from staff at this time? No, okay. So with that, we have an executive session, but before that, we have two meeting minutes for consideration by council. First is the December 13th committee meeting minutes, which were amended to include those votes which had been reported in the evening meeting, but not through the committee meeting minutes, so December 13th.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Liliquist and a second by Councilmember Hamel. Any further changes or discussion? Seeing none, that passes, all in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Councilmember Martins?
Abstention, I wasn't there for that meeting.
Okay. Right. Okay. And I believe the direction we've received from legal in the past was that reviewing the meeting and the minutes that you could still vote, but, so you choose how to proceed on that. So we have a passing then six zero with one abstention being Councilmember Martins. Then the January 10th committee meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Hamel and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Any discussion or changes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, that passes seven zero. All the new business. Councilmember Hamel?
I don't know if I need to make a motion on this, but I just was thinking a lot about the town hall coming up and the subject matter for it. And I really think, we've talked a lot about climate today, but we haven't as much as I think we needed to during the last hoverlong of COVID. And so I'm just proposing that we consider having climate action be the subject for the first town hall. And I would propose that it be in March to give staff and other key stakeholders time to prepare for it. This is a hugely complicated issue and affects every living person and every living thing. So I just, I think it's just super important that we pick up the mantle and have community input on it, especially since we're looking at a climate fund in November.
I see lots of head nods.
I'll make a motion, I moved that we, that our first, sorry, I should have just done that in the beginning. Getting, it's getting kind of late, I'm kind of a little groggy. So I'm gonna make a motion to that our first town hall meeting be on the subject of climate action and that we have it sometime in March of this year.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Hamel and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Any discussion? Certainly, there are lots of topics on the list. And so one has to be first, but that's not last. So just highlighting the fact that there are, yeah, many topics for discussion and more to come, so. Okay, so seeing the motion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that passes seven zero. Duly noted, and I will get to work with, I want to say everyone, because it's gonna be a joint effort to bring forward these town halls, meaning council, administration, the community. So thank you for that recommendation, Councilmember Hamel. Other items for old and new business? Councilmember Hamel?
Just real quick, I wanted to thank Lieutenants Murphy and Johnson from Bellingham PD for the ride-along that I did on Friday, it was very illuminating. And just wanted to thank Chief Simon for allowing me to do that.
Other items for older new business? Councilmember Anderson?
Council President, I'll bring mine forward tonight so that we can move on to executive and maybe have a dinner break.
We can hope. Okay. All right. With that, we do have executive session this afternoon. So for executive session, we have two items before us. The first is a potential property acquisition, that will be with Herb for approximately 15 minutes. And the second is labor relations, to discuss collective bargaining strategy with Monahan for approximately 30 minutes. And so just to note, we received a separate meeting invitation from Mr. Herb. And so to utilize that link to join the executive session. And so that concludes Committee of the Whole, so Committee of the Whole will be adjourned, and we will reconvene this evening at 7 o'clock PM.